Everybody please rise from the platform, ladies and gentlemen. No meeting orders. Go call.
Fairway, Mr. President.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Judy, would you inform us about the library?
I want to report on the exciting week we're having at the library. I'm going to sleep better tonight because today, uh, Bangford came to put our plaza, start on our plaza. I was getting very nervous. Um, so on Thursday, our nine-foot-tall, three-hundred-pound sculpture is going to be transported from Dubuque in less than high winds. On Friday, with the help of the city, it will be put in, some city workers will put in place. And then Saturday is our big special day. And because we certainly thank the, uh, city for their contribution, their generous contribution to this addition to our library, and because it is your building, I hope that all of you will be able to be present at eight thirty, um, nine-thirty. We will have a ribbon cutting. I will have a few welcoming words, and the mayor will, uh, cut the ribbon, and then we will go back into the new addition to the library. Where there will be punching cookies, and the sculptress from Dubuque, who has done a lot of public work throughout Iowa, various public buildings, is going to talk about how she made our sculpture, and also maybe show some, I think, a little program about some of the things she has done throughout the state. And that's at, uh, eight forty-five to about ten-thirty, and then at ten-thirty, we will have an open house in our new addition for the benefit of all, anyone who wants to come. And you know, if you come at nine-thirty, you don't have to stay the whole time, you can do whatever you want, but we just hope you will be able to be present and join us for this special day. Everything is completed now in our, um, new addition, so everything's up on the walls, and it's beautiful, so I think you'll be impressed with it now. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
And it does look great. And we've used it several times already.
Yes.
Okay, can send an agenda. Most of you approve?
So will.
Second? Go call.
Over.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
We have a building grip from Joann Peters. Extension.
For an additional deck.
Most of you approve? On my head. Second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Tom.
Boltman. Yes.
Okay, Crescent Park Drive drainage.
I put in that, uh, council memo really is, is just giving you a rough cost estimate to what was discussed at that neighborhood meeting last week. So when we met there last Wednesday, we discussed placing a dropper on the lakeside of the street, and this would start at Kurt's driveway, and then proceed north to Duquesne Crescent, actually quite a little ways into, uh, Duquesne Crescent, go to the bike holder. That's the same area that is the outlet for those, uh, intakes across the street. Okay, we then proposed to install an intake and drain tile through Pat Shug's north yard. You see what the cost estimates are for that. So it'd be about three hundred and fifteen feet of thirty-inch wide dropper. Some driveway replacement is that driveway replacement down there at, uh, Joann Peters. So if we would have bought up to that driveway, we'd do some driveway replacement, an intake and a grate, and then about a hundred twenty feet of tile. Just a, an estimate on that project there is fifteen thousand dollars.
The intake is very, it's going to be on the north side of that driveway? I mean, on the north part, it's a big garden.
Of, of paths?
No.
The intake and grate would be?
On paths?
Would be on, in, it would be in the curb line, but it would basically be in, in paths and north yard.
So where do you replace the driveway up there?
This, this driveway replacement that I was proposing is at, uh, Joann Peters next door, the one that's not.
Put the grate to the top of it?
Yeah. So it would be a regular curb in, curb intake, okay, on a, on a dropper. We have left some of it around there.
So, I would like to see us take some steps by steps. I'd like to see us put the drain in first. Kind of see how that develops, that, you know, how much water will catch, if we catch any, you know? Yet, I'm just sitting here, uh, trying to think positive that we can catch pos, part of it. That was less of the full, that it could continue down, get past the houses, though we wouldn't have any issues with hitting the basements. And then be a second spot that the water could go to, that we're not all pushing it out of one area, but, you know, work its way down to the, down the rest of the hill. I, I don't know. Put that in first, or then the curb gutter after we see what it's like? It's got to raid first. I mean, I, I understand that. Right now, all of us, we're kind of guessing with an idea of, well, we take it, baby steps, I guess is what I'm saying. So instead of throwing a curve in right away, whether it work or not, you see how much water it would be, if there's drain caught part of it, and then look at it again and try to determine if that's, if that's best option. If anybody's got any ideas, you open the door, because like I said, that water, Dale, you're the one that took the pictures of it right now. Do you think that would help somewhat first, starting off, once you're bidding, you know, you're in the area there, so?
Well, I think it's going to make a difference, yes. And I think that would help, and you're going to run, take that drain between the two houses, Pat and Joann's, and then pile it down towards the west.
Yes.
I guess it's all.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that's going to help somewhat, yes. And if we get a three-inch rain, we're still going to get water no matter what we do, so.
Yeah, right. But I, I'd like to see us take steps, that, in order for that to have a process, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Instead of throwing, that it might not need, or if we need to do it, we still can do it. I'm just, I'm just, I'm curious about what the actual guys, what you're thinking is.
Do they run a motion to, to help Vincent on putting that intake in?
I think that's a starting, but I, I, I'm just...
I would tell you that, that Pat has joined us, Pat's on, on video conference here.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody was aware of that. Uh, Pat, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. We were talking about just putting in, in intake there, um, so it'd be an intake, not do that curb and gutter, just driveway, but really focus on the intake and try to take water that way.
Okay.
So, we got people coming in to do some bore drive. Can you bore some of that in there, or do you gotta dig it up? What's the best process of that?
Yeah, it would depend on how, how big of a, of a tile we would put in there. You know, for that, uh, what I think in relative to short run, you know, it's, it's something that could be, could be dug in. And then also, at the same time, what it, what it would, um, give us to, the opportunity to do with Pat, Pat's got to be on board with all of this stuff, is to reshape the ground around paths too, so that, um, so that during, during most rainfalls, you know, there would, there would be ground up, up against her, her foundation, so she wouldn't, uh, have water, you know, penetrating the foundation. We have soaked the, uh, the dirt.
Do you want to bring in her whole yard?
No, no, just the north, just that north area, uh, where we'd run the tile.
I've also had water upstairs of the house. John knows about that.
Well, I think it'd be a better idea than, uh, I've never, I've never liked the curb idea, because people drive over the curb. I think that's very much water. Even though it sits at three months' curve, I think it's still.
So what problem do you think it could cause?
Well, you're going to always have the bump, and you've got to get that hole, or you've got to sculpt more, it's around the corners of the cabins, and you've got to put a curb in there so they can get it. The one thing. There's a curbing, I mean, a bit, you put it lower the road.
Well, you know, I think the main thing is okay with trying to just put tile in part.
That's a starting point.
See if we, if we still have the issues that I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Because it's been, it's been this way for how long? How long has it been this way?
I mean, decades.
Okay.
Right, but I think that, I think what some of the property owners think is that the extra cement is just kind of increasing the problem positivity there, so. Whether that's true or not, I don't, I think that's the point.
So how would you do it? Did you get this, or was something?
Well, I think we talked with our staff, uh, it is not a huge undertaking. We might be able to install a tile. But what we would do is, is install a tile, have a, a nice big drainage apron around the intake, and, and start at that one.
Do you want to go and spray that back before we start anything?
Your answer.
Oh, we said we want to go through the doors type.
Yeah, well. We do, and we need to work with fact, because we need to get easement on that.
We'd like to talk with you, okay?
Yep.
Pat, we're going to contact you and talk to you about that easement and some of the buildings. Is that all right?
It's fine.
Okay, we'll work on it.
Yeah, can we, uh, yeah, have a motion about what are next steps?
I'll make it. Outside, right?
The motion will be to proceed with the installation of an intake and grate?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Go call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Okay, we got water carnival activities you need to approve. Page forward.
Yes.
We do this every year.
Yep, um, trying to think of anything unusual as far as street closures or anything like that. We would be back to the, to the basic, uh, street closures that we've, we've done for years, and then parade route, and, and back to normal parade route, so at least move it down Madison to First, then, uh, then up Main Street.
We have a motion to approve the activities. Second?
Second.
Go call.
Boltman. Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, Mitch, we're going to change up the museum.
Thank you. I'm Mitch Stock. I'm president of the museum for about the last ten years, and I got a good job in Hollywood. Why do we have a museum in town? Maybe I want to throw out?
Tower of History.
Well, pardon?
Tower of History.
Tower of History, good. Any other reasons?
For all people to count.
For all people to count. How many's here, I don't want to bear to say, but they've, have been to our museum in their life? That's good. It's surprising when I'm back here and talk to people, they haven't been, I drive by it all the time, but I haven't been in it. It's free, you know? One of the things I got it down was to educate schoolchildren, which you talked, I mentioned about who we are, who we came from. And, uh, we've been working, trying to get more teachers to bring their schoolkids down there, uh, make it more exciting for them. And I think, I'm surprised, we were doing some work down there the other day, and, uh, it seems like on rainy days, the tourists come over. Grandmas bring their, their little kids over there, and they have a good time. So it does help the tourists a lot. I remember, when I was about ten years old, my mom and dad dragged me to the, uh, Chicago to see our cousins. And what was the biggest building I've ever been in at that time? It was a science and industry museum. I mean, it was huge. And it had all kinds of exhibits that a major city museum would have, but I remembered one thing. If you've ever been to that museum, any of you in Chicago, Vicki, they had, at that time, the biggest train set I've ever seen. And I was fascinated, and I got a Christmas, uh, present that year with a train set. My little train went round and around. So when I heard that John approached me about, uh, a new home for his elaborate train set, I said, you know, this might be an attraction. We could find room for this thing for these kids to come. And I said, but you kind of have to put Plexiglas around it. And I've been to these things in Oakland and San Francisco where they train bus, bring them around, and these guys are videotaping this, and the kids are trying to touch them, whatever. But it's, it's, to me, as a ten-year-old, or like my nephew, Vince Poon, he, he doesn't get too excited about some of those old dishes and things in there that, you know, the grandmas have and stuff for. So I'm thinking this might be a draw for the younger kids. So what I'm saying, I just would appreciate any donation, because we need a little money to build this big table and the thing to, to set it up on. And I don't know if the mayor makes that kind of money to fund it all himself, but we appreciate, uh, your support on this. So whatever you can allocate our way, I would appreciate it. And it would be a one-time expense, just building the thing up, you know? Uh, and these, we're lucky to have a mayor that would put the thing up, because it would cost a fortune. And we're going to keep the, the nurse one there too. So we're just making room for some things, and you know, if you've been to museums, like I have been in Minneapolis, and, and San Francisco, and Oakland, they continually change things, make it more interesting, uh, for the people. So, uh, we hope that the trades will stay in, in style and interest for the people. So that's my wish. Whatever you can allocate our way for one-time, but a contribution, we go for the lumber to put the stuff on, and that's it. And I'll, and I leave up.
Yeah, I want to go see the Giants, Giant play card.
Thank you for looking at it, you gave that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mitch, Mitch donated five hundred dollars, but I ran out of that pretty fast. One was a little high, so.
Well, I would like to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch. We're going to go to the council, because it's going to take seven hundred bucks just for good track. I think it'll make a huge difference to people in the museum.
Turn it together.
Don't look at it for a thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion, so.
Go call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Boltman. Reese.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
It's going to take a few months to put it together.
Sure.
It's been years to put it together.
It's happening here.
Right.
I can do that. Okay, thank you. Orders five thirteen. Do you need some parking? Horseshoe Drive?
Yeah. You want to talk through your proposal up there, Keith?
Keith?
Sure. Um, we went out there, uh, last week, and marked, uh, marking spots, uh, that way, in fact, people backing out from their own different driveway. Um, it's all on the inner circle, nothing on the house and mailbox side. Um, I think we did a good job on marking certain areas that would be, um, where people can comfortably park, um, and residents there, uh, not have fear, backing into somebody.
We just have to paint the lines?
Yes, paint the lines. Um, and on top of that, I think it's beneficial for any person spotted to get up there. It's pretty narrow, especially towards the top. Uh, if you get a gameless fire truck up there, it'd be, it'd be pretty tough with that, with the whole size parked, uh, parked on. So I think this is going to be highly beneficial that way also.
Do you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah. Uh, I live at one forty-six Horseshoe Drive, and, uh, I got a narrow driveway, and I got family and friends that come, and I got a nurse that comes once a week. If, uh, there's no parking behind driveways, they're not going to have anywhere to park. You know, people parking on the street hasn't bothered me. I know how to back out of my driveway, you know? Uh, I just don't think it's right. At, at least I would not like the lines across the street from my house. You know, if, if other people want the line across the street from their house, let them do it. I don't want it done.
What was your name again?
Barry Nyberger.
So are you at the top kind of?
Uh, almost to the top left. And I talked to Nyberger yesterday about it, because they were over at their house. A lot of those houses are just weekend getaways and stuff. Mine's a residence. I live there. And, uh, they said the property values probably go down a little bit, because nobody's going to have work anywhere to park. The three houses that left of me only have single-car driveways. Like, last time you guys had a meeting, I heard some lady say, well, it doesn't matter to me. I got three-car driveway. We only got one car.
So we're going to, uh, speak on the emergency vehicle aspect of it.
Do what?
The emergency vehicle aspect, the ambulance, fire truck, getting emergency vehicles up that, that's a pretty narrow street compared to the rest of our streets. And where there's cars on both sides, there's an issue.
Well, a car on both sides, I understand. That's something that didn't come two weeks ago, because I thought others let them do whatever they're going to do. And then when it started talking about no parking on both sides of the street, it's like, well, in between driveways and stuff, but there's a lot of driveways there.
Yeah.
You know, the people back, you know, I mean, the, my house was built in like nineteen thirty-two or something like that. There ain't no red line now, why change it? You know, I mean, it's, like I said, if somebody wants it next to their house, let them do it. I'd like my friends and family at least be able to park across the street if nothing else, you know? I'm not worried about backing up into somebody. Like I said, I know how to back out.
Be an optional thing, or? I mean, I, I have to go back and, and look at your address to see what the lines are, or painted, or, or marks are. But, I mean, I understand your point of view, and I did it, and I can see how it's frustrating, and I don't doubt that you know how to back up. About the same time, what I'm, what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for a couple things, um, with no parking. Areas that are going to be there. Um, I mean, those are going to be specific, and when we, and you saying your upper left, I remember, I can picture that. I think my biggest issue would be, you know, we're going to have people, you know, they're going to, you know, they're trying to use it the way it is. I think we need to set some type of standard of, of where we can and cannot park. Now, does that mean that we can, we can move it to, to fit your need, to fit your needs? I could take a look at it and see where that's parked at, but to be specifically near the top of that, the top of that's awfully narrow. It is awfully narrow. And there's no way a bus can get up there, uh...
Well, I'm not at the very top of it. That ugly green house, I'm going to get siding on it hopefully before winter, but right now it's an ugly green house, you know? But, uh, yeah.
I'll take a, let me take a look at it, um...
But like, somebody says, well, why can't they park across the yard? I agree with that during the summer, you know, no problem. What about during the winter?
No.
You know, I mean, I don't have the garage to put my car in, so it might not stay in the driveway. My neighbor shows up at eight o'clock in the morning, you know, parks across the street, you know?
I'll take a look at it. Let me take a look at it, and I'll come speak to you directly.
I would appreciate that.
And I'll give you my thoughts on it, and if we can come to some understanding, that'd be great, but at the end of the day, I'll be open with you. At the end of the day, I'm going to do, I'm going to make a decision what's best that I, for the safety of everybody that's on that street. Whether it's all the way up at the top or all the way at the bottom, it ha, there has to be some type of safety measure in there. So I can, I know when you sent fire trucks and you sent ambulances to your residents, that they can get there safely, and they can get you out quickly, or whoever lives there. Um, but I will take that under consideration. I'll come and meet with you personally about that, and, and we can discuss that.
All right, thank you.
Is everybody's okay with just letting Brandon?
Well, this, this ordinance, but this ordinance only talks about the, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't deal with the hash marks. It only deals with the no parking on, um, one side, right?
Yes.
So I don't think that's going to affect this.
That does affect the ordinance. It's going to affect the road map.
Right.
Yes, correct.
So I don't think it affects this one.
No, if, if you are, if you are prepared to make the outside of the horseshoe a no parking zone, that's the only thing that this ordinance said.
That's, I understand.
That's, that's always your recommendation?
Yes.
Only the, only the outside no parking?
Correct.
With, that, that's what this ordinance does, okay? There'll be some additional yellow painted curbs, and that's, that's what Brandon needs to come talk to you about.
Right.
Right, well, the thing across the street, that's what I'd worry about, because there's too many driveways there that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so this, this ordinance is, is directly indicating for the...
On the outside.
The outside, the house mailboxes. As far as the lines and stuff, we can discuss that, and we can, we can go further down that line as to where we'll put that.
Like I said, my house was parked in four, or made in the thirties, and it's, you know, been buying so far.
No, and absolutely, I, I wanted to come, I wanted to accommodate everybody if I could, but ob, obviously, that's, it's going to be impossible. But at the same time, like I said, at the end of the day, it's, it's all about, you know, the safety for everybody to get up and down that, uh, that drive. And, yeah, so you might be able to back up with the best of them, but there's a heck of a lot of people here that, well, not here, here, everybody's a great driver here. But there's a heck of a lot of people that don't know how to back up with a dart.
Most, most of the issues are when, during, during holidays, particular weekends, right?
That's correct.
But, you know, during the wintertime, when it's kind of, I don't know, they're, well, like, I said, during the winter, or when it's raining and stuff, I don't want to keep pulling in my yard when it's raining either, you know? But like, it's mainly like during the winter, you know, Christmas and stuff, my kids, grandkids come to my house, I mean, where they going to park?
You know? Because you're not going to see that yellow curb under the snow either, so you're not even going to know it's there.
Do you stay in the whole meeting?
What?
Do you stay up for the whole meeting, whole meeting?
For the whole meeting?
Okay. Then I'll get it here.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send, I'll send, I'll, I'll stick with you.
Any idea when the whole meeting's going on? I mean, do you want the phone number and stuff?
Yeah, I'll get it. Come back here, I'll get it.
You think you want the motion from five thirteen?
Yes.
Go call.
Tom. Reese.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would say if we, if we get this.
I don't want to.
I know.
Okay. Resolution twenty-one twenty-nine, if that goes, anything you'd like to say, Brett?
You've already said everything.
Yeah, we've been through it quite a few times already, but I think this is number five or six, right?
Yes, it is. Okay.
But I would like to hear the story though, Brett.
I do.
I thoroughly enjoyed the tour.
Oh, yeah, I was glad that you came out, but that was a good, uh, mine is John's question, right, to start off to me. It was a good.
I know, uh, uh, no, that was...
I think he's false. He told me to have one.
That was...
Did you put him up to that?
Yeah, I did, and it, well, I didn't know what he was going to ask.
No, that, that was actually pretty enjoyable. I'm glad Scott and I talked about that. Um, I know that's off, off the topic of this, but, uh, um, that, that turned out quite, quite well. I was, I was glad to have Senator Darcy in there. It was nice.
Oh, cool.
Okay, the first one is, is resolution twenty-one twenty-nine. Okay, the first one is, is resolution twenty-one, twenty-nine, development agreement?
Yes, so you do have a signed, uh, copy of that development agreement with, uh, with the BAFCO now and you will be ready to proceed.
Second?
Second.
Local.
Hold on.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes. You also gave motion to put the site plan.
Site plan, I hope, I hope that everybody at least took a look at this beautifully prepared site plan and, you know? Because I would, I would tell you that they've, uh, really done a nice job for that and it is, uh, just very thoroughly has covered everything, you know, as far as, as the project and, I know we're always real concerned, um, about drainage and they have made some additional accommodations for this new amount of, of drainage area out. So you'll see two things, that, that the berm increases in size. So that big berm there, um, kind of at the intersection of, of M fifty-four and the highway, that it will get bigger and go further south. So the detention area increases quite a bit. And then there's also ano, another detention area that's probably what we've seen because they'll be on, on the north side, but so they will have water for, or a detention basin for the water that flows to the north. Doesn't actually flow into the lake, it flows to Indian Creek, but, uh, they're just doing a real nice job of handling all of their issues there.
I'll make the motion through.
Second?
I'll second.
Local.
All right.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Hold on. Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. The easy one is building management.
Totally. Second? Local.
Hold on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Very good.
That, I believe is the last of them.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are good to go. Other than one more special event coming up next week, then?
Right, so Tuesday, July twentieth, we're doing our groundbreaking, so I, I emailed Scott, you know, this morning and, and Dale's gonna come out as, as well and it's important that we, I'm not being a little bit picky on this, but we're gonna do it a particular way where, um, I want the whole plant to be a part of the picture, not just five people that, uh, uh, have been to these meetings and things like that. So I want all the, because we're an employee owned company and so we've got a, uh, area lift, uh, for Dale and, uh, I'm gonna see all the, all of our employees in the picture. A few of us can hold some shovels up front and, and, uh, we're gonna do that on the twentieth, so we're probably gonna start pushing some dirt here around, uh, next Thursday. That'll get through all these measures, so. You know, I, I say on behalf of BAFCO, uh, we're very appreciative of the city's contribution and ability to work with us. Uh, that, that's why we got here in ninety-nine, if you wanted to hear that story, but that's why we're here and that's why we're still here and so this, uh, this is a big opportunity for, for all of us and, uh, we're, we're, we're really excited to, to get to that point by this time next year. The sad part is, is that, uh, while the, the metal is out a long way, so now we're looking at the building arriving towards the end of March and it was the end of January like three weeks ago, so, um, it, it'll take a little while for this one to get put up, this is my point, but, uh, we're gonna start and get concrete and dirt moving by next week.
What time did you say that is?
Uh, we're gonna do it twelve-thirty on the twentieth.
We have the shovels, we've been waiting for years to use them.
Yeah, well, I, I got the whole management team that's gonna have the shovels, so I told each one of them, bring a shovel, because he's only got ten.
They're painting gold too.
I know ours are, but they won't show up to Dale's spot or block the way.
A lot of color these days. We'll take a point to be a part of.
Yeah, we are.
Yep.
Excited about it, thank you.
Okay, the CDVG housing rent program, question of payment?
Yep, so we're gonna request, uh, payment number nine to, to the state of Iowa and determine pay that to, uh, to me to try.
Oh, second?
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yep.
Reese?
We want to approve.
Yeah, one more to approve.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Local.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Okay, and I want to make a payment for the fish barrier project.
Yeah, so here's, this is a little, well, unexpected, uh, good news, that our portion of the fish barrier project is, uh, thirty-three percent will be maximum of three hundred thousand dollars and we just always thought that it's gonna be three hundred thousand. And total on that now is, uh, two hundred eighty-two, two hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. So what we would do is make payment to, um, to Ducks Unlimited, okay? But before we would make payment to Ducks Unlimited, we would put the draw request into the state to, to be reimbursed for that also. So we're authorizing, uh, payment on this, but we won't definitely make payment until
We'll be motioning to, uh, someone, second? Local.
All right.
Yes.
Hold on. Yes. Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
One other thing on that. Talked to, to Ben Wallace and, um, first of all, the construction is, is done, we got power there, the pumps are all running, every, everything is, is good to go. They may look at, they are going to look at running that, to where they would de-water the inlet. And, and it's just, uh, really exclusively a DNR choice about how they're managing their runoff. But they, uh, they do intend that they would start the pumps and start to de-water the, uh, the inlet. Now, what that'll do is it, it is able to de-water it down low enough that it'd be, be left with standing ponds out there in that area, but that would be it. So, um, when they do that, they'll, they'll be, um, a certain amount of, of fish kill associated with that just by, by getting all the water out of there, that the fish would no longer be able to stay in those ponds. But then they would also anticipate that they would actually do a, uh, a little fish kill on the ponds that are out, okay? Expect that this might happen very shortly. And actually, the question was, was whether the city had any concerns about if they started that thing up right now, you know, and, and you'd be having some, some dead fish about water. You know, the fact of the matter is, it's busy around here any weekend now, you know, so, um, I think it certainly is within the, the DNR's decision about when they're gonna do it, if it sounds like.
The administrator reports?
Couple things on, uh, um, first thing that, to discuss again, it deals with, with the, uh, lagoon. Todd from BK was, was up here again today. And what they're doing was, was poking around out there. He wanted to really see how far to the east that the wet spot went and whether it continued around the corner. So they did a little bit of, of digging, it was just digging with the spade. John Healy was out there too. So, uh, really all that we had decided was John Healy will be out there and, and dig on the south side of the berm. Dig two, three holes out, out there, uh, using, using this back hole and they'd be five, six feet holes. And you really wanna get the chance to observe and, and see where.
So you're talking along the road where the wet spot is, right?
Yeah, on the, on the south side, yeah, where the wet spot is. They, they'd be digging out there.
Well, they're close to that tile, isn't that?
It won't be, it won't be that hole.
It won't be that hole?
Not, not quite. So that's, anyway, that, that'll be the plan.
But they'll be able to determine if the tile is.
Uh, not necessarily. They'll be, be observing the water, I mean, anything?
If this company decide if it's coming straight through the bank, once you dig down there five, six feet, we'll see if it's coming into the bank this way, if it's coming up through the bottom, it's coming up through the bottom, keep digging down to see where it's, where it's coming from. If it's coming from the side, you get a general idea that there's something wetter either up the hill a little bit or it's coming from down the well.
Were they gonna do some samples, like the DNR guy wanted to have them, but the.
They do some, some samples as well at that time.
So we don't think it's leaking where they did the patch?
The patch were around the corner or right there? We don't, we don't know if it's, it's still coming through the bank.
Like if we just, we do the same last time, we just wonder.
The, the entire south bank is.
Yeah, they put all that.
Benonite.
Benonite?
Benonite in there.
And around the corner.
But it's still.
Now, they're really.
Wet. I know, but the test, the test samples should tell you something.
Yeah, it does, it's, there's still something coming through.
There's some EPLI, but not high amounts, is what I understood.
But there shouldn't be really any.
I thought the DNR guy said the other day out there, there's always going to be some.
There's always gonna be some, but this is just a little bit higher than what there should be.
Anyway, that's where we're, we're at. John, John Healy was there, Bill, he would be doing the digging, said his back goes out of town, be back in next month.
And this is all charged to the contractor?
Yeah. Since you are headed out that, a letter in regards to electric service down in the panel, I'm interested in, in your thoughts on this. You've seen, uh, really the, the proliferation of lots of extra refrigerators out there that, that people would, would plug in their, their big residential, uh, refrigerators outside, outside their campers. I guess I don't know exactly how many there are down there, other than to say that there's lots and handle number then continues to grow. So we had some issues down there again over the weekend, but I'll talk about that a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, and this, this same area's had issues trying to allow six, seven years. We, when Brian Swartson was still here, Bill and I and him would have to go down and run water on the one single KVA transformer that was running this area. And it'd be so hot and it's usually not a busy hundred degree weekend and a lot of them lately. That happened, we did that for a couple of years and then two years ago, I believe, we split the load up. Just had another fifty KVA transformer next to the last fifty. Split the load up between two of them. Continue to have the same site, have the same problem, overheats transformer. Converged a transformer up, slipped and sank a weekend. Dean and I changed it out, happened again last weekend. Same transformer. Same transformer.
So are you saying that you don't technically know if it's in regards to all this extra stuff down there or not?
I, I think some of it is all these bigger campers with more stuff. There's some, I mean, there, I think there's multiple things, but what we did today is we went down the trip and Austin changed out transformer on Sunday, put another brand new one in, sort of like fifty-four hundred bucks in a month, the transformer. Besides labor, but anyway, so we went down there and I looked at it and I figured out that a couple of other smaller sites that were running on the transformer that decided that didn't overheat, I figured out how I could split them up again, but I'm to the point where there's no more splitting up. The, the site that had the issue had twenty-four sites in, or twenty-five sites in that area plus the bathtub, so like twenty-six electrical devices. The other two sites had thirteen between them. So I split them between six in one way, seven the other way and it's, I was able, when we had the twenty-five set up, I was able to split that twenty-five in half. So now I'm down to twenty and twenty-one on each transformer, so I evened that load. So from there on, I don't, I don't know what, what else I can do as far as splitting load up. Asking to not run us all this stuff when it's hot or have it at all, talking with Sandy, she talked with Ben Wallace and the state does not allow all this extra stuff in their campground. And I'm pretty sure the county conservation don't either, but I could find that out. I just wondered if we shouldn't adopt some of their rules to bringing everything from home that they like to bring. But it seems like we have this trouble most of all is when we start having these people stay all the time.
Exactly.
When they would come and go and leave, our transformers had time to cool down good and not overheat them. Now they're there all the time. I don't know if they're leaving the ACs on when they're not here or if they are, you know, so it's just, it's a load issue and we need to ask them for some help to help it cool down. If it's around seventy degrees, we don't have that issue. You get up around a hundred, those two transformers sit out in the sun, you have problems.
How long ago was it that they went from the two week maximum stay to the seasonal? When did that start?
It'll be more than ten years.
So, so with that said, you know, I guess, thinking about this, I, I, I agree for a while with that, for, for years, and with big appliances like that, I stay plugged in all the time, you know? Part of this, you know, like, um, if somebody's got a smoker down there where there's smoke, those aren't plugged in all the time.
Right.
You know, so I can't imagine them being, unless you like the refrigerators and those types of things, you know, on, you might have a freezer down there too, you know? But I, I could see that. I could see the refrigerators and having to go over that.
We've got some site sellers got full size house refrigerators sitting beside our camp.
Right, right, yeah.
And the, and the, and the bigger mini fridges, there's, those also.
And.
They sit out in the sun, they never shut off.
Right.
They run.
And then the other caveat of that is, is if my refrigerator broke down inside my camper and I had wanted to bring in something plugged in on the outside to, because, you know, it's getting the hose running. You know, so probably have to make a exception for that, I suppose.
So you're saying it's fifty-four hundred bucks a pot for the?
No, that's, that was for the two that we burned up so far. We just got in a bid Friday, I don't know, a month or two ago, to put back into our stock.
Sure.
And that was the bid on, that's how I know that price.
Okay, thanks. Have, have you talked to Ryan? See what the rules are or?
No, Sandy did today and she, she contacted me, we can get with Scott, see what, with more information on it, but I, I'd like to do something down there, I mean, at least ask for some of their participation, maybe helping us curb load.
I think the refrigerators and the freezer are going out.
No, the smoker, the longest smoker I've ever had was six hours, you know, unless they're doing a brisket, then that's a different deal.
Maybe you can allow those for now and see what the refrigerator won't do.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too upside down about those.
Yeah, I guess the, the correspondence here would, would essentially say, um, no exterior of major appliances that aren't integrated into your camp, okay? So it, it would do away with, with the refrigerators. The other portion asked for some additional voluntary appliances. It doesn't say shut your air conditioner off when you're doing, which would interest that. Or, uh, any other thing related to, to appliances where you have some, some optional ones.
I see. They're not, they're not very, very well. So how do you use them?
Well, for continue to have problems, you know, really the level of time you stay in it, so they come.
Well, you know, and the other thing that Jeff mentioned was, campers are doing various. Jeff, Jeff threw that.
There's, there's some coming along.
You know, they got, you know, they got dishwashers and everything else in the house, so I think this is a good ordinance, I mean, I.
Now, just, um, this B thing to, to point out to you is that, uh, at least with Stat, we would have had every intention that we would implement this regulation and, but that we would give them notice over the fall and wintertime in preparation for next year, okay? Before we have now burnt up two transformers and it, and it gets really expensive. Just before we'd have now burnt up two transformers and it gets really expensive. This would say as of July 15th, it would be next Thursday, that this would go into effect. Expect lots of pushback from a lot of the seasonal campers. So I do want you to, I guess...
That's the busiest row that we have, is that row, is 139 to like 164, besides the bathtubs on it also. That seems to be the big primary problem there. And I even talked to our DGR engineer about it and I even mentioned, do I dare, you know, jump up to a 75? He goes, you do that, he goes, then you're burning a wire underground, then we're, then we're making a move to dig stuff up. So I, that's why I say I'm, I'm about to the end of whatever I can split up.
Give me again, I know the cost of the transformers, but how much total do you think that this has cost you in this season?
With labor? Well, labor. Guys each time that it takes...
I mean, they're out there on Sunday.
Yeah, well, we were out there Saturday on Sibley's table and they're out there Sunday this time around. We got water carnival coming up in two weeks, me and Dean again, so I hope we don't have a problem.
I just kind of want a dollar figure for what it's already cost us, not an exact figure.
Yeah, so it was three hours per guy, plus equipment, you know, skid loader and stuff, same rate, three hour, whatever that would be. I'll bet we're fairly close to probably 6,500 dollars probably, in the two days working.
Those two weekends that...
Those two weekends, one day each weekend.
Okay, thanks.
I guess, yeah, you just really need a commitment from the mayor and council that when we send this out, that you're absolutely on board with this. And it's just happening a lot quicker than what we got answers. But like I say, just be prepared for some pushback.
I support.
We gotta do something.
A little bit on, out of 20, the rare, the rare clock, we're still waiting to get the final narrative report on the environmental. But I had some correspondence with the consulting unit today, which is finishing that up, it'll just be a matter of a day or two and the environmental would be done on that. Also then, we'll have a little discussion about the depot that the locals have decided not to pursue obtaining ownership of that depot. Just that the project was getting a little bit too big for them and...
Where do we get ownership?
Bill?
Is all of that done from green, everything is here, we're waiting on coverage, it has to be done?
For, or we own that.
I know.
The deal about being able to sell it to locals, we're waiting on that.
Do we have everything, I mean, we got the value, but is that all, because you kept saying it was green.
We don't have that.
Light green.
From, yeah, that man will need it to sell it to locals.
But I thought, so that's the only holdup was on the depot and the other, all of the legal D work has all been done on the... After on the... I misunderstood, I thought part of it was with that.
A little bit on some street work too, that Nick, who's a county engineer, called me here last week, talking about a street patching project. And they would look to coordinate a street patching project that includes some streets coming through town. So two areas, the street past Graham Hogs and then also Rolfe Avenue as it comes down from the Bat 154 and around the east side of the lake. Okay, now that's, both of those areas are really in need of a, of a patching project to take care of. All of the dinged-out corners and everything, it's, it's in time for a project. The city would be responsible for the cost of the portion that's in the city. And they're looking at 60,000 dollars approximately. And I still gotta get all the information from, from, but just wanted to, I guess, let you know about that and see how that would end up ranking right on priorities, but what's one to do for Shrink?
Want to decline on doing this?
This fall.
We're the people who must do it. Do you want to put a cap on it? Cheaper than we could do it.
Hey, it's, it's a good project, it's just...
I think we do need a street project, I think we need to look at that and see what we're gonna project. Because we got a couple commitments that we haven't fulfilled.
For, yeah, when you talk about a project, we next summer? Yeah, we have not budgeted anything for this right now. We intend to be going to the city management summer conference next, Tuesday, Thursday, and be back for...
Is that it?
Yeah.
Before we go, Jeff and Dean, you're doing a really good job, I like the way you work together and the way you're tired of seeing me every day, but that can't be helped.
That will not go away.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Second? Beating your drum, thank you.
Bring more doughnuts, so.
I will.